Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, February 15, 2023. The time is now 7:00 PM. If I could ask folks in the room here with us to please join us in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without any division of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a, the first matter we have at 7 o'clock is a change of manager application from the 99 Restaurants of Boston. Is there someone here? Sorry, are you here from them? Come on up here and have a seat. And I'm going to guess you might be Mr. Chakas.
Chakas, yes.
Chakas, okay, thank you. So it looks to me as though 99 is asking that change of manager be approved. You're going to be the Chuxbury location manager?
General Manager, yes.
Have you been working there for a while?
I've been there since November.
Okay, all right. And can you give us just a little bit about your background in the industry?
I've been doing this for close to 30 years, 14 years with who knows Chicago Grill, a few years with Panera, another six years with 99 Restaurants. I've been a general manager at every, at every stop.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so you're familiar with the responsibilities?
For sure, yep.
All right, very good. And no other changes are being made, just the manager tonight?
Just the manager, correct.
Let me ask my colleagues if they have any questions? Anyone? All right, so we're going to make you have an easy evening here. We're going to ask, I'm going to ask if there's a motion to approve the change of manager application?
So moved, second.
All right, and for our recording secretary's benefit, the motion was offered by Mr. Mack. He seconded by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair's going to vote aye as well. So that will be unanimous. And again, for our recording secretary's benefit, that's four in favor. Ms. Wellman is not yet present. We expect her to arrive late. So that's four votes in favor with Ms. Wellman being absent. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Good luck.
Okay, I want to ask if there are any residents that wish to address the board on any matter this evening? And I don't see anyone rising. There's no one in the room other than our DPW director. So that brings us to new business. And we'll turn that over to my first item, to the town manager, who's going to walk us through fiscal year 2024 Enterprise Fund proposed budgets and capital improvement plan.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a presentation, PowerPoint presentation to go through, given the board copies. Tomorrow, this presentation will be on the website along with the full capital improvement plan and enterprise budgets. Tonight, I'm going to review the FY '24 enterprise funds. They include telemedia enterprise budget, water enterprise budget, sewer and stormwater. I'm also going to review water capital improvements, telemedia capital improvements, sewer, stormwater capital, and then in general, the capital improvement plan for FY 2024 through FY 2028. This is the five-year plan for the town. The next page on the presentation just gives something I like to go through, gives the definition of what a enterprise fund is. It essentially is just, it's simply a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism for municipal services, which we charge a fee. So unlike, you know, it's not, we have the general fund, which is the major fund for the community. And then we have enterprise funds where we charge a fee for service, and those fees go into that account and are only spent on the specific account or any, whether direct or indirect costs. Why we adopted enterprise funds, it identifies the total service costs for the fees we're charging. Those who, those who use the service pay for the service. It's really within the control of the person that utilizes the service. All investment income and surplus stays with the fund. It doesn't get intermingled with other funds. Prevents deficits from impacting the general fund. It also maintains Department of Revenue Oversight and Town Meeting Oversight, which is a positive thing. The town established enterprise funds for sewer in October of 2002, for water in May of 2005, for telemedia in May of 2016, and the most recent being stormwater in October of 2019. This next slide is some definitions that we commonly hear when we go through this presentation. I'm not going to go through all of them, but we'll talk about the property tax levy, which is the revenue that we raise through real and personal property taxes, capital outlay expenditure exclusion, that's when a town votes to exceed Proposition 2 and a half for a very specific capital project. Once that, when that project is paid, which is usually within a year or two, it goes away. A debt exclusion is when the town votes to exclude debt for a certain project or capital expenditure, and it goes away once the debt service is paid. Capital budget, what we'll talk about tonight, really is the appropriation and the spending plan and the uses of borrowing with direct outlays for capital and fixed improvements. The capital improvement plan that we're going to talk about also is an appropriation for spending plan that, again, uses borrowing and capital or fixed asset improvements for all of our capital, and capital includes equipment, includes projects that we have, not just in the next fiscal year, but over the next five years. I mentioned the general fund, which is different than enterprise fund. The general fund is the, the major fund in the town where most of our financial resources and activities take place. Stabilization fund, which you'll hear again tonight, about tonight, that's a fund that we've set up that's governed by Chapter 40, Section 5B, that we set funds aside to be used in the future for any lawful purpose. It's really our rainy day fund in town. Currently, the town has a little over 14.1 million in the stabilization fund. We set up a water stabilization fund, which has a little over 1.9 million in it. And we have a sewer stabilization fund, which has a little over $3.8 million in it. When I mention the term raise and appropriate tonight, that's raising and appropriating funds through either the user fees, such as water and sewer rates, or through property tax revenue. Indirect costs, which you'll see when we talk about enterprise funds tonight, these are just allocations for cost of services, not reflected within the enterprise budgets themselves, but their costs that are incurred by the enterprise fund for time that the Director of Public Works will spend on enterprise funds. My time that are on enterprise funds, the financial departments, health insurance, Medicare tax, things like that, those costs are not budgeted within the enterprise funds. They're budgeted within the general fund, so there's a chargeback. Free cash, this is essentially the funds that we have at the end of the fiscal year, that is essentially the surplus that a town has after you close out revenues that are in excess of projected revenues and any budgets that were turned back. Retained earnings, you hear that with, in regard to enterprise funds, that's essentially free cash for an enterprise fund. When we close the enterprise fund at the end of a fiscal year, any revenue in excess of what we projected and any budgets turned back at the end of the fiscal year go into retained earnings. Both retained earnings and enterprise, and free cash are certified by the Department of Revenue before we can spend any of the funds, and they need to be appropriated at a town meeting. Water retained earnings has a balance of $1,567,763. Sewer has $6,164,106. Cable has $2,425,977. And stormwater has retained earnings balance of $294,674.
Mr. Montori, just on that note, oh, can we go back one?
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's just for the residents, as far as the retained earnings on these particular budgets, some residents might say, you know, why, why do you have a budget of $6 million? So can we explain, it's typically a projection over years, because folks can say like, we're overcharging, but what you do is you have to kind of make a projection so it doesn't go in a deficit. And then when it does have a profit, you know, we do allocate those dollars for additional spend. So instead of raising taxes or appropriating from the general fund, we typically use the earnings in those, in those retained earning funds on certain, on line items. Because, but I think the question is, can you explain?
Sure.
Why some of these budgets are look like?
So, first of all, the retained earnings are used for capital expenditures, so that in the past and even in the future will allow us not to have to borrow for those capital expenditures. So it saves us there. The other thing, these balances could be cumulative from previous years. It's not just one year. So for instance, the sewer is cumulative from previous fiscal years, not just the end of last year. And the sewer has a high amount, but the plan is to utilize specifically the sewer retained earnings in FY '24 and then for the next four years after that to offset the high debt that we have. So that's going to help keep rates stable, if not low, because without using the retained earnings to help offset the high debt, you'd see a major increase in sewer rates. So we do utilize it for projects. We've utilized it to offset debt, and we've kept it, you know, for future, future projects that we may have.
Okay.
The enterprise fund retained earnings for stormwater are relatively low compared to the others, but that's because it's only, the enterprise funds has only been in place for a couple of years. We haven't spent any money out of there yet. The retained earnings for cable are on the higher end because that's just the revenue we take in from Verizon and Comcast, fees that they pay for the, pay to the town, and the expenses of the cable operations are nowhere near what we take in, not, not that far, they're, they're not that close to what we take in for revenue. But I think the cable industry in the future is going to see a downturn in revenue. Most people are moving off of cable and Verizon. So having that money set aside will allow us to continue services into the future. So there are a plan for these retained earnings, but it's, they're not all one from one year.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. I think we're going to go a little bit deeper in the presentation as well.
Well, I just want to ask a question while you were bringing that up. I'm seeing all these upgrades that have happened, you know, the new microphones, the new cameras, the new screens, were those taken out of the cable?
They were taken out of the cable budget. We were able to fund that within an annual budget within the revenue that we receive from the cable franchise fees and license fee that we have. Next year, we're going to use some retained earnings to do further upgrades to the high school studio.
I just remember a couple of years ago, residents, number one complaint is they'd watch the meeting, either they couldn't see us or hear us. So I think that's a well use of it. I think a lot of people are watching us more. And so nice to point that out, what we're using it for.
Yep, no, absolutely. The telemedia work has gone right back into the broadcasting services and equipment that residents have taken advantage of. So I am going to start with the telemedia budget first. This first slide gives you a snapshot of the telemedia budget, what was expended in FY '22, approved in FY '23, and what's being recommended in FY '24. The major increases, salaries, the only increase really is cost of living increase of 2.25% raise, plus step increases for the two full-time employees. We do have part-time employees that assist with covering meetings for us. That's also within the budget. Operating, this fund addresses the equipment and maintenance and operation for programming and broadcasting needs within the department. This increased $28,100. Repairs and maintenance actually saw a decrease within the operating line because the van is not being used as much as it had been in the past. So there was a reduction in fuel costs. Professional services saw an increase of $18,000 because we will begin negotiating the next contract with Comcast, believe it or not. And we hire special counsel for that, so that comes out of this budget. All other supplies and expenses decreased due to the demand on promotional materials, and we have a healthy inventory of supplies. And other equipment decreased due to, again, efficient past equipment investments and satisfactory inventory. The only other increase in the budget was under travel and staff development for increased training and conferences for the staff, and that was $2,800. Capital outlay has $30,000 within this line for what they call, refer to as a MAM system, which will allow the staff to edit and store media remotely without relying on external hard drives. The, there will be another capital expenditure that will have a town meeting, but it will be in a town meeting warrant article. It'll be $200,000 that we will transfer from retained earnings for an upgrade of the high school studio, which we utilize for programming. This next slide just gives you a snapshot of their capital improvements for the next five years. The only thing we have right now is in FY '24, which is, again, I just mentioned the studio upgrade. As I mentioned previously, that's the balance of the retained earnings, is a little over $2.4 million. We do collect two franchise fee, fees and capital fees, one from Comcast in the amount of approximately $227,000 to $250,000 a year in FY '22. It was $227,019. Franchise fee for Verizon is more because they have more subscribers at $391,143 in FY '24. And it's based on their gross revenue that they have in town, and we get 3.5%. The total revenue in FY '22 was $618,162. And if you go back to the previous slide, you can see that we normally spend for capital and operating budgets anywhere from, you know, $426,000 in FY '24 to $558,000 in FY '22. So we're well within the amount that we get for a franchise fee. But again, we're just not sure what the future of cable television industry is. So the more we set aside for any downturns, the better off we are. And the director of the telemedia department and staff run a very lean operation, much leaner than we've seen in other places, and they do an outstanding job. So.
We receive revenues from Comcast and Verizon, but we pay for it. So.
You do.
We can thank them through us.
Yeah, it's a pass through.
Yeah, great.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Montori, just, I know Mr. Kratman kind of alluded to it too, but you can hear the sound in here is much better. And I think residents, to echo Mr. Kratman's comments, they've made commentary about the need to improve, and it wasn't that long ago where we were really behind to times. So I want to commend Mr. Dorrington and his team because it's a constant state of improvement now.
Absolutely.
And that's a lot different than it was just a few years ago.
Absolutely. And to go back to a point that Mr. Kelly mentioned, it is a pass-through cost on everyone's cable bill, so the ratepayers aren't paying for it. What's important to note, when this board negotiated the contract, towns can go up to 5% of gross revenue. This board chose to stay at 3.5%, and in fact, Verizon was at 5%. And in the last contract, the board went down to 3.5%. Other towns asked for much more in regard to capital and other broadcasting improvements through that franchise fee. We kept, this board kept it very lean. So being conscious of the pass-through to the ratepayers, I think we're probably on the lower side of what most places do.
Yeah, a lot of good progress, though.
Yeah, very, excellent progress.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one other question. I know we've improved town hall, and I know you've done a lot of things, but town meeting has still always been a thing of, we've had some problems with, is there any kind of, I know school has their budget, it's their project, it's their infrastructure, but is there something that, microphones or something that we can do that we could bring there to work with their system?
Yeah.
That always seems to be a problem twice a year.
I think they made some improvements up there since the last town meeting, but I can, I'll have to follow up and double check on that. And you're absolutely right, we need, need to do something different. They're not, they're great in and out.
We've talked about improvements a couple of years, and it's just that we think they've made them, but, and we got there, and it seems to be the same thing. Once again, it's like, I can't hear you. So we're just, if there's some way of, even if we can bring remote microphones or something to be able to work with their system, that would be something I'd appreciate if we'd look into.
Yeah, I can look into that. Any other questions on telemedia? Okay. So next is the water enterprise fund. Water enterprise fund consists of two budgets. There's a water distribution budget, and there's a water filtration budget, which is the treatment plant. The first budget that's on the screen is the water distribution budget, which has an overall increase of $253,767. The major budget changes for this, for this salary increase was 2.25%. Step increases in longevity are also included in the salary increase. There's a $40,000, $40,950 increase for terminal leave buyback for retiring, for retiring employee. Under the operating budget, there's an increase of $14,000 due to the cost of just general supplies and services increasing within the department. The major increase to this department's budget is $200,000 in capital outlay. This is to purchase and install replacement meter registers for existing meters. We plan to replace approximately 400 per year. Currently, these meters are at the end of their useful life, and we need to start replacing them. Not the meter themselves, but the meter head for transmitting data. The other thing is the current meter heads are not serviced any longer by Badger, so we need to remove, you know, get these replaced as soon as we can. We will look, we'll look to request $200,000 a year over the next 10 years to address this issue, but it's something that we need to get going on. Currently, the meter heads that are failing throughout the town are causing us to estimate bills for residents, and the residents have had that happen too. It becomes very problematic for them, and obviously, they're not happy with that. So we want to try to start addressing as many as we can. We'll be talking to a contractor that does this type work. If we can get it done quicker within the same type of budgetary plans that we have, we may do that also. We should kind of evaluate that over the next couple of weeks. Under the water filtration budget, this has an increase of $347,083. Again, salary increase based on the 2.25% salary increase and longevity changes. The major increases came in the operating expenses, energy and utilities. We have a projected increase of $90,000. And this is mainly because, one, the cost of electricity, but two, the last couple of years, the amount of electricity that we're using pumping water has increased. The demand of the water treatment plant because of the dry summers that we've had, and the use by residents has caused us to pump more, which is basically impacts our energy and utilities. Repairs and maintenance increased $7,711, basically due to the general cost, and you'll see this throughout all these budgets, just the cost of supplies and services have gone up everywhere, and no matter if it's a small pot, tool, or just a service in general. Leases and contracts increased $36,000, again, just cost of services, but the main part of this cost increase, we are going to contract out lab services. We had a, the chemist that we had has left us, and filling that position is not easy. So we're going to contract much of that work out, and that increased this area $36,000. On the other side of that, we saw a decrease in our all other supplies and equipment by $35,600. Because we're not doing the in-house lab work, we were able to reduce our supplies and expenses in that area. So there was almost an offset in that position. Finally, there's an increase in residual disposal. This cost increase is $12,820, and this is the sludge that we generate at the plant, and that cost every year is increasing and getting even more difficult to, to dispose of. The plan is to evaluate how we are generating residuals in the plant, to see if there's a more economic way of doing it that will allow us not only to operate the plant more efficiently, but also to dispose of the sludge in the future more efficiently.
I got one question on this section. So the, we're contracting out a position that somebody retired from?
No, left for another job.
Left for another job. So is that a position that eliminated?
No, because there's still work that needs to be done. The only part of that job we have contracted out is the actual testing that they would do. But there's a lot of paperwork and reporting they need to do, and other functions that they had at the plant. So we're shifting some work around within the staff up there to take that on and hire another operator.
Okay. So has the position itself changed of what they're doing? Is it a different title?
It's going to be a different title.
Okay.
It's going to be almost an assistant director.
Okay.
No, it's going to be, we're calling it a working form and supervisor, but almost like an assistant director to the current director of the plant.
Right, thank you.
This next slide is combined, it combines both the budgets into one. This is what gets voted on at town meeting. As you can see, not only do you have the salaries and expenses we just discussed and capital outlay, but we also need to fund a reserve fund for the water enterprise fund, any occupational health issues that come up. We fund other post-employment benefits that had a sizable decrease in FY '24 based on the new valuation study by the actuaries. And then debt is also funded, and as you can see, there's an increase in debt. Indirect costs, as I mentioned earlier in this presentation, the allocations to other departments that support the enterprise funds that we charge back funding for. The main increase in this, in this area was under retirement. Retirement increased 8.9% based on the new valuation for middlesex retirement. This next slide gives you a snapshot of capital improvements within the water enterprise fund. And from FY '24 to FY '28, we are planning 28, a little over $28.1 million worth of capital. Most of that is in the area of water distribution, design and improvements. Within this next fiscal year and the next five, five years, we're planning to be more aggressive in our approach to water distribution, design and improvement. The plan is to undertake three miles a year of installation per year. That's up from a little over a mile that we were doing each year. We have a substantial amount of water pipe that needs to be replaced, and we want it to get more aggressive in the approach. The next is $2.9 million for water treatment plant upgrades, tank maintenance upgrades. Next year, there's, needs to be, we're going to be using retained earnings to repair filter beds that we have at the plant, and in the future, replacement of pumps. Our annual hydrant maintenance replacement program is within the five-year plan. We're going to, we are asking for $125,000 in FY ' '24, and then beginning in FY '25, we're going to seek $150,000. And then vehicle replacement that the enterprise fund historically has shared with the sewer enterprise fund and in some cases with the general fund. In FY '24, just going back, we're going to look to borrow $2.1 million for water distribution. We already have an authorization for $1.5 million for water distribution. So those two combined with the remaining opera funds, the remaining funds we have in place, will get us over that three point, three miles a year that we want to do starting next year. As I mentioned, $125,000 for hydrant replacement, the $2.1 million for water plant improvements that we're going to undertake, and $195,000 for vehicle replacement. The retained earnings that we're going to utilize for, to help pay for some of these projects, as I mentioned, we have $1,567,763. We have money in the water stabilization fund that we don't plan to use in FY '24, but most likely FY '25 and '26, we may use it for plant upgrades. As I mentioned, we are going to be borrowing funds for water distribution from FY '24 to FY '28, but really, we're going to need another $27 million from FY '29 to FY '33 to continue doing three miles a year for a total of $50,700,000 in the next 10 years, which will address 40% of the water mains that need to be replaced. So it's an aggressive plan, but again, based on what we're seeing out in the field, this needs to be done. This next slide.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tom, excuse me. Let me just add that I want to remind residents that this area- Let me just add that I want to remind residents that this area of improvement is one of the highest priorities for this board and we've asked you to be as aggressive as possible and you and your team have independently come to that conclusion and plan. So there really should be no surprises, certainly at this table, but residents give us that feedback, right? They're calling to say, "We have concerns because we have water main breaks and we have brown water and we need help and the only way we're going to be able to correct that is through the plan that you just stated."
Correct. And later in this presentation, I'll outline what work we're going to be doing, Public Works work, we'll be doing over the next construction season, but this slide is a good indication of what type of pipe we have, material we have in the ground and the length of each. Breaks us down between asbestos cement pipe, our cast iron pipe, our ductile iron pipe, our wrought iron pipe, the amount of plastic and steel we have in the ground, and we do have some unknown type pipe in the ground. As you can see from the slide, our priorities for water main replacement include asbestos cement and cast iron. So at the end of this presentation, we'll give you our plan over the next year, but our overall priorities are to address asbestos cement and cast iron that, that has experienced the most frequent water breaks in the system. That's our, that's our priority. The water main break location, pipe size and pipe material information is tracked through our town's GIS database, which we have an individual keeping all that information for us and we have it on a map that we update on an annual basis. The locations that we're talking about include, you know, Clegg-Holland Lane, Hood Road, Trowbrook Lane, Guile Avenue, Victor Drive, Beach Street Neighborhood, South Tewksbury in general, and Hill Street. So that gives you an idea of the priorities.
Excuse me, Chairman, to the Town Manager and our DPW, well, we have them here. I know we're going to get more into this, but some of these locations I'm looking at, I know especially like the Beach Street Neighborhood and areas like that, we've had areas of other issues in the same area, so we're going to be replacing water lines through this area. That means we're probably going to be trenching and going through there. Is the drainage work in certain areas going to take place at the same time while we're out there doing some of this work? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Kevin Hargman, Director of Public Works. Yes, when we take on a project to replace the water main, our plan is to resurface the road after that work is done. Before we resurface the road, we look at the drainage and make sure we're making improvements where we need to, to alleviate any, you know, drainage issues, flooding, ponding, things like that.
So are we adding, there's one thing to resurface and things, but there's areas where we have country drainage and things like that. Are we adding, I know we have, we've been, you know, collecting stormwater fees and things like that. Will those areas get additional catch basins, drainage improvements and added work while, while we're surfacing the roadway?
Yes. A good example of that is Water Street. We replaced the water main and we just installed a new drainage system down there to alleviate the flooding in the city.
Okay, it's named appropriately. Okay, no, I just, I see some of these areas and that's the one thing that I know we'll get questions on, especially, there's nothing worse than going out and resurfacing a roadway and then have a water main break or have to dig it up. So I'll let you finish the presentation, but I just want to get into that, that we are putting the thought process in, there's a plan in place, I'm sure you're more than qualified to put everything together and I like the fact that we have, you know, a professional engineer that's designing and going through all these different areas and thinking ahead of coordinating not only our work, but work with other utility companies so that we're replacing a water line, we're doing drainage improvements, coordinating utility work. So once these residents have to go through the trenching, the problems of probably a couple of months of doing it, they shouldn't have to see anybody back out there for probably another 10 years because it should be something we won't have to go back out there and dig up again. So, thank you.
Okay. This next slide, just a snapshot of our debt service on an annual basis, how it, what the percentage of debt service is to budget, just because we do have a higher than normal debt, but unlike other communities, all of our water debt is paid for within the Water Enterprise Fund, so we have a large percentage of debt and as you can see, it's increasing as we move forward into the years and get aggressive on water installation, water main This next slide is a snapshot of the revenue that we're projecting to collect in FY '24. Has a column that shows you what we're projecting in FY '23 and then what we collected in FY ' '22. As you can see, our projected surplus in FY '23 and FY '24 are less than $40,000. In FY '22, we did have a higher surplus than we, we had a high surplus based on what we projected and actually collected. And the reason for that, as you know, it's been a, was a dry year. We had extraordinary pumping. Anybody that called in regard to why their water bill was high, we simply showed them how much water they pumped compared to the previous year and that people realized they were just using a lot more water. So this just gives you a snapshot of how much revenue we take in and what we're projecting going into FY '24. This next slide, again, it's just a, you know, visual of what we budget each year in water and what we've collected. And again, a lot of it's just based on, you know, how much water is used in a given year. We project based on what we think a normal year is and we collect, you know, some years we've been close to our projection, what we're budgeting, and other years we've been much higher, but the revenue is really driven by demand and usage of water. And this also gives you an indication of much the budget has grown over the past 12 The next part of the Water Enterprise Fund are the rates. First item is water rates will be increasing in FY '24. It's the first time water rates have increased in three years and actually in the last five years, we've only increased them once. Water usage and revenue projections are based on actual usage for our August '21 billing, our December '21 billing and our April '22 billing cycles. Annual water usage is projected to be 649,350,523 gallons. It's actually a decrease from last year's projection by about 10.6 million gallons. And again, we did base it on the actual billing cycles for August '21, December '21 and August '22. Our collection rate is projected to be 95%, which is very good. And the rate projections include capital within the five-year capital plan and the annual funds for water distribution upgrades that I mentioned. This next slide gives you an indication of what the rates will be on a per thousand gallon basis, what they're going to increase to. There also includes a secondary meter at the high end. This next chart gives you an indication on a dollar basis what we're going to see an increase in rates to be. As you can see in the two areas that have a highlight, that 55,000 gallons is what we see normally in the town for water usage and the 90,000 gallons is what the state uses as an average for water usage throughout the Commonwealth. There's a note below, that's, I think is a very important note, that 83% of the residents are within the 55,000 gallon annual usage in town. And of that, 83%, 53% of that usage, that percentage, there are, 53% of the residents are within 25,000 gallons of annual usage. There are approximately 9,574 residential users in town based on information I pulled out of Munis. So most residents will see an increase, an annual increase of $54.69 or less. This next slide just gives you, you know, information on what the average water bills are in the Commonwealth. The state, there's a, there's a survey that's done, but it's not done every year. It's done, done every few years, so the last information we have is 2017, is the state average is $595. The low and the high, the 123 to $2,225, the state median is $568. The MWRA, which is what I looked at recently, the F, based on 2022, is $717.24. They had a 3.16% increase. Non-MWRA communities increased 15% from 20, from 2021, their average bill is $673. Our current bill is 911 based on 90,000 gallons and will increase to $1,016. Again, for someone that uses 90,000 gallons, which is the higher end in the community. Just final comments on the Water Enterprise Fund and rates. As you can see, there's an impact to our rates based on water distribution improvements and as we get more aggressive, that impacts our rates. The rates that, you know, what we collect for revenue is all based on water usage. In a dry year, we collect more revenue than we project. That's historically what has happened. If we have a very wet and rainy year, we will collect less, so we really need to be careful on how we project. That's why we try to use what we believe is a normal billing cycle. The projection for future years, we're going to start, we will see increases in the future years based on the amount of debt that we're going to undertake to do water distribution projects. It's very difficult to project out in future years, but we will see rate increases each of the next four to five years based on the amount of work we intend to do in the enterprise fund. We hope to build retained earnings each year to allow us to continue doing capital projects other than distribution improvements without borrowing funds. And we just need to keep an eye on our capital projects on a given, on an annual basis to make sure we're addressing not just distribution needs, but also our capital equipment within the department, as well as our pump stations and our water treatment plant. So that's water. Any questions?
When, when, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Montari, when would we, when would we set the rates? Is, do we have anything on the books for when that comes in front of the board?
So I usually make the presentation at this time of year. Sometimes it's pushed into March, so, you know, if the board could vote to, you know, adopt the rates sometime at the end of March or sometime mid-April, that'd be great.
Okay.
Prior to going to town meeting.
What's that?
It'd be good if we had it done prior to going to town.
Right, I guess my point is, I agree with Mr. Johnson as far as, we just outlined the capital plan for improvements and I do agree with the majority of them, water, 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 without water, where no one's here, but I will also say it's our job to kind of look at each line item when we set the rates and as much as we want to make sure that we do all of these, there might be one or two capital projects in, in my mind, not the board's mind, because it's an individual vote where one of these, you know, we might have to consider all the projects, I'm just going to say for lack of better words, push it down further because it's going to impact the rates to a certain point where you have to weigh that out with the residents in the, in the billing. So I just was interested in when we're going to see the rates and then we might have to make some hard decisions if, if individually on the board, that the rates are going to go up to a certain point where it's, it's, it's a pros and cons type of thing, so I just wanted to know, so, all right, thank you.
It's important to note, even if you did the same amount of pipe installation that we've done in the past, or even if you done, do no pipe installation, you know, maybe take a year off, rates are still going to go up because of the cost of the treatment plant and cost of distribution. And on the treatment plant side, there's not a lot, I mean, the increase is there, there's nothing, there's no new initiatives, there's no things we want to do but don't have to do. It's all built into chemicals, which we need, and the cost of chemicals have gone through the roof over the last couple of years. So that's based on real costs from our consortium. We're not inflating the costs. As we all know, the cost of utilities has gone through the roof. So, and as we're pumping more water, even if our rates for utilities were lower, we're still paying more on electric, electric costs because people are using more water. So there's not, the real area, if you wanted to impact the rate, it's going to come into the distribution, improvements to distribution. We're really locked into the, to the budget. There's not a lot we can do there.
Yeah, well, I think probably my, my comments were more of an education to say, hey, this is how it works. We determine the rates and then these capital projects will go in front of the voters on town meeting. So I think it's important for them, for the residents to understand how it works because, let's be honest, we hear about the water and sewer rates, you know, that's probably one of the top things besides sidewalks and among other things, so I think it's very important for folks to understand the process.
Absolutely.
Hence the question.
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. So I know chemicals have gone up, all the things. Each year I see this budget and I'm always waiting for us to catch up because we control our own future. We are one of the lucky communities that has their own water treatment plant, our own plan of what we're doing and how we're doing it. The problem is, is that we're behind because of the infrastructure that we have left is the water lines. Or is it 70% that needs to be replaced around that? Whatever, it's, it's, it needs to be done. I know we need to make those improvements, but MWRA, it's just like I've been waiting for those rates, it's, they're pretty high in other communities and so MWRA was still a couple of hundred dollars more than what the MWRA is. And are they getting some sort of, I mean, I know it's not our thing, but are they getting some sort of state offset or anything else that they're getting? Because if chemicals are going up for us, I'm sure they're doing water line replacements. I'm sure they're doing, they have to do infrastructure improvements as well, but we're constantly saying above them.
Yep.
So like we're.
Great question.
I would like to look more into that. And then the other thing is, like, I'm wondering how much water we're losing. Because if we have all these leaky faulty pipes and we're pumping this and we're using this energy and the utility costs are going up, if we replace a number of these water lines, obviously water pressure gets better, infrastructure improves, will that reduce maybe some of the costs going forward of some of the, I mean, obviously if we replace, we're able to replace all the water lines in the town within the next couple of years. The cost of going out every single night, replacing it, I mean, I'd like to know also what's the cost that we've had to spend over the last, like, couple of years of constantly sending crews to, to these repairs. I'm sure it's quite hefty because we've been out quite a bit.
We can get you that.
And that, and if that goes away, I can understand, it's like a yin and a yang, okay, you know what, rates have to go up, we're going to replace it, but we won't also, hopefully, some of that going out and replacing things, that debt will go away. I'm always trying to replace spending with some, reducing some debt somewhere else. And I know we've looked at this, but, you know, residents are sick and tired of the brown water. We have to do something about it. Nobody likes increases, but, you know, it's, it's unfortunately some of the things that we have to do. You know, this is something the residents want, they want clean water, they want these things fixed, but if there's a way to, like as, you know, Mr. Kelly said, you know, look at ways to be innovative. I know debt, we've talked about, you know, this numerous times about the debt for the sewer is going down over the next couple of years. I mean, I'm hoping that, you know, three, four, or five years down the road, yes, we'll increase slightly of what we're doing, but MWRA and the other areas will go up significantly. I've always been waiting to be able to sit here and say, "Our rates are lower than somebody else's." And that's, that's our goal, is to finally get there. And hopefully if we replace these water lines, the system works better, the, you know, it's more efficient, we're not losing water, the pumping stations aren't working as hard because of what's, we got broken pipes and I can't imagine how much water with these old faulty pipes is leaking through our community and how much we're, you know, we're paying a lot of money through our water filtration system and there probably, you know, a lot of loss to our community. But if you can give us some numbers on how much we've spent in the, in the last couple of years repairing it, that would make it feel a lot better with these rates.
Yeah, we can get you that information and what we're spending on the cost of staff and, and supplies on water breaks. We have a lost water number that we, that we generate each year, we can get you that. We can get you that. And on the MWR, MWRA, you know, I had a chance, they do a survey every year that's on their website. And I looked at, you know, a variety of towns on what their water rates were increasing. So, you know, we absolutely are lower than other towns. Okay? It's just a matter of what towns you pick up, okay? I've, I see, I looked at increases in communities from one year to the next in the high teens. I've looked at increase, no increases in communities. The tough part about the MWRA communities and comparing ourselves to them, the MWRA assesses them for their water. Okay? And any of their capital that the MWRA themselves has. Each community is responsible for their own distribution system. In many communities, and it would just, it, it, we just, I haven't looked into all of them, but I know of some close by, that supplement their water distribution debt and costs on the tax levy. So their fee, so we're an all-in enterprise fund. We fund the entire operation. You fund salaries, you fund fixed costs, you fund debt on the water side 100%. In other communities, that's not the case. You could do $5 million worth of debt in water projects, and half of it's on the tax levy. So their water rate is lower than ours. Until you dig into all of that, it's hard. You can't just say, well, Burlington's rates bills are lower than ours. Well, Burlington has a very, has a tax levy that is, you know, subsidizing those distribution projects. So that's why it's, it's difficult to compare sometimes. You really got to dig into it. But we have a good example just in this town where our sewer rate, when you, when we look at this, is lower than other communities. The reason for that, 50% of our sewer debt is on the tax levy. So you really, it's very difficult when you start looking at some of these towns, when you say, geez, that community has a much lower average bill. Well, you need to look at how much do they subsidize of their cost. We don't do that in water. This board could do that.
To Mr. Montori's point, he's spot on. You show me a town or city where their rates decrease, and I'll buy you a Coca-Cola. So he, we've spent so much work on this, where he's, he's spot on. This is a problem across any town, city across the USA. And I think we're in a good position, but it's still our job to kind of look at every line item. But Mr. Montori is spot on.
And Selectman Kravon brought up, you know, you know, a good point of, you know, we are ahead in doing a lot of work, you know? And our rates are high because we have to do the work. I do believe at some point, these other communities are going to see this, the work we are doing in the system is going to have to be done in their communities too. It's just the way it is.
It's timing. Let me just add a couple of comments because I feel compelled. First of all, this is a healthy discussion. It's always wise, in my opinion, to challenge ourselves to do better if we can. So, and I agree with much of what Mr. Kravman said. The one thing that I would add, at least from my perspective, is it's not about are we lower and rate than another community. I don't believe that's what residents want. They want to turn on their tap and have the best quality water that meets their needs. And if that happens to cost more in Tewksbury because our structure is different or the other community is subsidizing their rates in other ways, I think we have to look at it from the standpoint of what's happening in the borders of Tewksbury. Can we improve on our rate structure by doing certain things and looking for those savings opportunities? Absolutely. And we should do that. And the other comment I'm going to make, and I don't think it needs to be made, but I, I will because I think it's important, again, for residents to hear this. Every year, we give Mr. Montori a performance assessment. And the one thing that's been consistent every year that he's been the town manager here in Tewksbury, working for this Board of Selectmen and our residents, is that his financial approach and financial management has been graded as exceptional. So, again, this is a healthy discussion, but it shouldn't be lost because we're not doing that side of the conversation that I will say, I have trust that you turn every rock over. And we will find every last penny that we can before we turn to the ratepayers to put another dollar in. We always have had those discussions. And at the last resort, we bring the rates that we feel are necessary. And I think my fellow board members will endorse what I just said or at least agree with it. It doesn't mean we can't do better. I want to emphasize that point. But we have to challenge ourselves. And I support what Mr. Kravman's driving at. I just don't want to lose sight at 30,000 feet of the fact that a lot of good is being done as well. So I'll start there.
And just a couple of last points based on, and I agree with what everyone has said and what Mr. Kravman said. And I, and you brought up a good point, and it'd be interesting to know what type of subsidies maybe MWRA does get from maybe the Commonwealth. I don't know what that might be and what their communities might get. But we also need to remember, rates have stayed stable for three years. No increase. We kept them down because of, we were in COVID. We were taking on the school project, the fire project. You know, once in five years, rates have gone up. So this board, the administration, the Department of Public Works has done a good job keeping rates stable over the last five years. So when you look at, you know, where we've been over a six-year period, I think we've done as, as well as, as most communities. And, you know, we will continue to, to, to look at ways of keeping rates, the rate impact at a lesser amount than, than we're projecting. It's just difficult when we know we need to do the work that we need to do. Simple as that. And, but we'll continue to do it, even after tonight's presentation. And we'll get you all that information so you can look at what we're looking at and, and review it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One, one comment. First of all, well said. You, you made some very good points. And Mr. Kravman, I completely understand where you're coming from. And I am also interested to see what those MWRA subsidies are. But I looked it up very quickly. They service 3.1 million users, 200 million gallons a day. So there are economy of scales that come into play where we have 9.5,000, 9.5K users, residential users, they have 3.1 million. So if we're looking at economy of scale for providing these services, if we're close on rates to an organization of that size, I think we're, we're doing a pretty stellar job. So being a fraction of that is impressive in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sewer. So sewer enterprise budget, there's only one budget that pertains to it. The salaries are increasing $40,052, mainly for a, for their 2.25% increase and any other contractual obligations. We did see a decrease in terminal leave because we had an employer retire in FY '23, and that funds are not needed in FY '24. Similar to what we just talked about, utilities are going to go up for the sewer enterprise fund also. You know, we have nine generators and 47 pump stations. Actually, it's 48 pump stations, I believe, Kevin, right?
Yes.
We found a pump station we didn't know we had. So I need to change that number. So that's just the cost of me, you know, the utilities for those. The biggest increase is our assessment with Lowell Sewer. That's increasing, projected to increase $338,830. And that's our allocable cost to what Lowell uses and assesses as, assesses to Tewksbury. And then we did see a decrease in their OPEB amount based on the new valuation that was done this past year. Their indirect costs, the allocations did go up, a little over $16,000. We had a 5% increase in health insurance, as we did in water. 10% increase in property and liability insurance, again, as we did in the water allocations. Their retirement assessment actually decreased on the suicide based on the most recent valuation by Middlesex Retirement. And their Medicare taxes based on, again, same as water, it's based on payroll. So the total appropriation for sewer increased $405,547. From a capital standpoint, over the next five years, the plan is to undertake $3.3,646,000 of capital improvements, $1,450,000 in inflow and infiltration control work, $1.4 million in sewer pump station improvements, and $796,000 in fleet and equipment replacement that they'll split with the Water Enterprise Fund. These projects will be funded through retained earnings. Capital improvements in FY '24, $495,000, $50,000 for RNI work, again, funded by retained earnings, $250,000 for sewer pump station improvements, funded by retained earnings, and $195,000 for fleet maintenance, fleet and equipment replacement, again, funded through retained earnings. As I mentioned, the sewer retained earning balance is a little over $6.1 million. And the stabilization fund has $3,852,643.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager. Which of these line items, or actually, better question, do any of these line items include the grinder pumps? Is that the sewer pump station improvements or?
You mean grinder pumps as in the?
Were there a few pumps that were going to be converted or improved with grinders that were needing to be serviced?
Yes.
Frequently?
Yes.
And is that included in that line item?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
This next slide gives you an indication of what the sewer debt is as a percentage of budget. The interesting part about this slide is I'm only showing you 50% of the sewer debt. The other 50% is on the tax levy. Projected sewer revenue, we're projecting sewer revenue to increase $426,841, generating a surplus of $40,394. As you can see, FY '23 and FY '24 projections are not that high based on what the budgets are. FY '22, again, saw a high surplus in the sewer enterprise fund for revenue because of, again, if we pump more water, you're going to get more sewer also. So that's the, that was the big change there. The other thing is, within our sewer revenue, is the water, is the state hospital is part of this. And they also have combined sewer and drain system. So they use a lot of sewer capacity. So when it, when there's a dry season or even when we have a wet season, they generate a fair amount of water, a fair amount of sewer bill. Next slide gives you an indication of budget to revenue for the sewer operations. As you can see, the budgets increased every year, and the revenue has fluctuated in various years. At the bottom, you have, there's a breakdown of what we've used from sewer retained earnings to help offset debt. In FY '19, we used $253,244. And if you go all the way to FY '24, we're going to use $900,000 to offset debt to help stay, keep rates stable. In regard to the sewer rates themselves, they will increase in FY '24 for both in-town and out-of-town and exempt properties. And the reason why we have two rates is because the in-town rate is for property owners in the community. And they have a lower rate than the out-of-town rate in exempt properties because 50% of the sewer debt is on the property tax levy, which those in-town rate users pay for. The out-of-town rate users do not. The exempt property users do not. So when I put a rate together, I do a calculation of what the rate would be if 100% of the debt was on the sewer enterprise fund. Sewer usage was based on, again, similar to water, August 21, December 21, and April 22 usage in billing cycles. Usage will go down a little over 2.6 million gallons. And the collection rate, similar to water, is 95%. These are the rates for both in-town and out-of-town and what they'll be increasing on a per-thousand-gallon basis. And this next slide is an indication of what the dollar increases will be depending on usage. Again, the highlighted area shows what the community average usage is. Most of the community is within the 55,000 gallons per year. The 90,000 is the state average. The 80% of our residents are within the 55,000 gallons. And of that, 80%, 53% are within 25,000 gallons. We have 7,551 residential users, which is about 78% of the town is hooked up to sewer.
So Mr. Montori, I'm doing a little math while you're doing this. So off that footnote, it would appear to me that there's 7,551 sewer users. If you use the math that you gave us, that's about 3,200 people are, or users are at 25,000 gallons. It's 42% of the users. And they would experience a $9 annual increase.
Correct.
And when I go back to water and do the same math, 43% of our total 9,574 users will experience a $21.75 increase.
Correct.
Per year.
Based.
Per year.
Yep, that's what we're projecting, based on the estimates.
Yeah. So just to put it in that perspective. Okay.
Next slide, similar to what we did with water. Because the data for the state is, doesn't get updated. Gives you an idea what the state average is for sewer, $862. Our current rate is 833. And even with the proposed increase is 874, so a little bit over, that number will change, obviously. It's when it catches up to today's rates. MWRA, $1,102, non-MWR A communities. And when I say non-MWR A communities, I pulled this off of the survey that the MWRA does. They don't do all of the communities. They just take a sampling of so many. The average is $995. So we are lower than those for sewer. Again, 50% of, 50% of our sewer debt is on the tax levy. If it was not, then these rates would be higher than the MWRA. This next slide, again, 80% of the potential users are connected. It's actually 78%. That's, please be corrected.
78%.
Yep. And in FY 2011, we only had 62%. So obviously, we're making strides. Future debt service for the sewer enterprise fund, as Mr. Kravman mentioned correctly, it's going to have a dramatic decrease in probably five years. We stay stable for the next few years, but then we start to see a drop. But it is still a high amount of debt service. The revenue projections, the rate projections and revenue projections for the future years is always difficult to, to project. I will say, based on what we looked at for sewer, they really will stabilize over the next few years. A lot will depend on Lowell sewer assessment. We're not borrowing any funds for sewer. Everything will be funded either through the stabilization fund or through, through the retained earnings. So keeping a healthy retained earnings will be good because it'll help us do those projects. Out-of-town users, we continue to monitor their usage as well as the state hospital. If those users come off of our sewer system, then obviously, will have an impact to our revenue. State hospital use, as I mentioned, because of some of their issues with combined drains and sewers is an inflated sewer cost. So as they correct those issues or reduce their revenue. But they are a big user in the community. Any question on sewer?
I have just, I know you'll break it down when we get to town meeting. And, but the fleet and equipment replacement, we got. and equipment replacement, we got $195,000.
Yes.
And that, is that something that's, there's something breaking down? What, what are we replacing with?
Oh, let me get to the end, I'll show you.
Okay. Thank you.
Stormwater, this is our drainage system. The budget for stormwater is different than the budget for sewer and water. There are no salaries within this enterprise fund, and there are no indirect costs. The revenue that we generate through our stormwater fee goes directly to capital improvements, and it goes to operating costs to maintain the drainage system and to comply with our stormwater permit. As you can see, we're projecting the same amount of revenue that we project in FY '23. There's no increase to the rates. Stormwater fee will remain at $75 per residential equivalent, and we'll be able to undertake some capital projects in needed areas. This next slide just gives you an idea of how we calculate the, the rate. Somewhat complicated, but the flat fee for residents is $75 per year. The, and, and the commercial is based on the amount of impervious cover that they have on their properties. Residential, I reuse, generate, we project to generate $693,000 in revenue, and the larger residential and commercial properties, $415,477 in revenue. Again, same projection as we used in FY '23. This, this revenue and this enterprise fund has been very close to what we project on an annual basis. Projects for stormwater over the next five years, total $2,565,000. $2,150,000 in drain, drainage improvements coming from the stormwater fee. $415,000 coming from project development. In FY '24, we're looking to spend $1 million. Actually, it should be only 450, that should be 500, 5,000, sorry. $450,000 on drainage improvements for the Pringle Street culvert and the Woburn Street and Felker Street neighborhood. $55,000 for project development for a design of the Van Buren Road drainage system. So those are the improvements for stormwater. Again, as I mentioned, we have $294,674 for retained earnings. This is one area that we've been successful in getting grants to do projects, and we'll continue to seek out grants. Any questions on stormwater?
I, I just have one quick question. We just had a conversation about while they're doing the replacement of the water lines and then replacement of drainage, but yet I didn't see the locations up there, what we're proposing to do for water lines compared to the drainage. So are we going to use the money from the water lines to do, to fund the drainage improvements? Or is it something that we're using out of separate accounts?
It's a combination of three. So sometimes when we do a water project, we do do the drainage under that same contract. It's funded through the Stormwater Enterprise. Also, the in-house staff takes on drainage projects as well that we, we handle before we do roadway resurfacing and things like that.
We don't use water money, though, to do drainage work. So if we, if we have drainage under a contract for wa, for water project, if we have some drainage work within that contract, we allocate the funds to the stormwater.
Right. Okay. I would just expect that if, if we're going to be doing those water lines in the same area, it would be on that list, the places to be doing it.
So we're going to, let me go through, we're going to, I have the list here, so we'll go through the list.
Okay, thank you.
So capital improvement plan, this is the five-year plan that we put together every year. This first page is a summary of all the general fund projects that we have ongoing or that we're funding for. When, when the full plan is put together, and I'll send it out tomorrow, there are narratives and justification for each of these areas. We break it down to facilities and grounds, fire, DPW transportation, and DPW fleet and equipment. So this first page is all general fund work. Second page is enterprise fund work that we're doing for sewer, as we just talked about, water, as we just talked about, stormwater and telemedia over the next five years. And then we go into more, more detail within the plan on what we're using, we're raising appropriate funds for, transfer from stabilization funds, CPA funds or free cash. So these are mostly general fund articles, or general fund projects that we're doing in each of those categories. Next page goes into what we're using Chapter 90 funds on, how much per year, for things like pavement management, improvement projects, project development, which is mostly design, and, you know, roadway preventive maintenance and roadway reconstruction, resurfacing. Next slide goes into what we're using sewer, water, sewer and stormwater funds for, for projects that we spoke of in a little bit more detail on the previous slides. The next is the borrowing that we're going to be doing for water projects. $2.1 million in FY '24, and then 5.4 the year, the years afterwards. This gives you the breakdown of what the debt service will be in those years. Again, doing three miles a year. Then this last slide gives you an idea of how much we're spending on annual, annually on our capital, and just a summary of all of the funds that we talked about on a per-year basis. Again, there's backup and narratives for each of these departments' budgets and budget This next slide is what the proposed expenditures are in FY '24 that will come from the stabilization fund. For the DPW, they'll be looking to purchase a rubber-wheeled excavator with a brush cutter attachment. This will be split between the DPW Highway General Fund. It'll also be funded through water and sewer enterprise retained earnings because the vehicle will be used not just for the highway department, but on water breaks and on sewer maintenance. We're also looking to purchase new two-variable message boards. The current message boards we have are outdated and difficult to find parts and maintain. The $22,000 is a portion of the cost. We're splitting the remaining cost with the water and sewer enterprise funds because they'll utilize them also. We're looking for an asphalt curb machine to maintain asphalt curbing. Again, this will be paid for utilizing the town general fund and the water and sewer enterprise. We're looking to purchase a new brush-banded chipper. The current one we have is dangerous for the staff to use, so we're looking to purchase a new one of those. We're looking to replace a, an engineering division expedition for the engineering staff, and we're looking to replace an F-350 with a plow package within the highway department. Under the fire department, we're looking to purchase a new ambulance and equipment for the ambulance. As you know, we've been purchasing, you know, new ambulances on an every-other-year basis. And we're also looking for a new fire engine and equipment to replace one of the Texas, Texas vehicles that we bought some time ago as a stopgap when we had problems with our fire, fire engines. Police department's looking for upgrades for their facility. They need to replace the elevator, which will be $99,000. They want a new floor in the roll call room, and they're looking to put new cameras in the cells. That's all part of that $130,000. So we're looking to take out of the stabilization fund, $1,502,865. As I mentioned earlier, the balance is a little over 14.1 million. The balance after we use it on this, these projects will be $12,615,006. The plan will be to replenish those funds in the fall with any free cash that we have. From the Community Preservation Act, undesignated funds. Facilities and grounds department is looking to install field lights at Ogden Field. That'll be the last field we want to put lights in down at Livingston. That's the large baseball field. We've already done the girls' softball and new lights at Memorial Field and at State Field where the youth football practices. We're also looking to purchase new bleachers for the home side of the field at the football field down at Livingston. This past year, we purchased bleachers for the visitor's side. We now want to replace the home field bleachers. There'll be a cost share with the youth football on that project. And again, that will come from CPA funds.
Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. Montori, we've talked about the state hospital collectively a ton on the sport. So I guess my only question or ask would be, can we send a delegation a letter specifically on the fire spend? Maybe there's a secret squirrel budget, you know, at the state level that can help us offset some of those costs in lieu of the state hospital. I don't think we need a motion to the board, but I think we've done that in the past, years ago, and we actually got some equipment from our delegation. So I know we talk about it many times. I don't think it can hurt, but I wonder what the board thinks.
I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. I think if we, we can move forward with these items, but at the same time, ask for the state to pay for one of them. For instance, I'd probably ask for the new fire engine. And if they fund it, then we won't spend our money.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the manager. Under this rubber-wheeled excavator with brush cutter, is that a Trackless? Is that the name of the brand you're buying?
Yes.
Are you going to get the sidewalk plow attachment? And it's more than $180,000, because I just bought two.
No, that, this is not a sidewalk machine. This is a wheeled excavator, which is a large piece of equipment for, for digging and brush cutting.
Okay.
You know, it's.
But is Trackless the brand?
No.
Okay.
It's rubber ties. When you said Trackless, I thought, yeah.
Oh, no, Trackless is the brand that makes this kind of thing.
Oh, yeah. I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
No, this is much larger.
Okay. You know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Because you also can't register them at the RMV lately, so I've, I was like, I was going to warn you. Okay, good. So that's a different vehicle altogether. They're very good vehicles, though. All right. And then with regard to replacing the engineering division expedition, has there been any discussion about making that an electric vehicle, a plug-in hybrid, or anything like that?
There has not at this time, but it is something we, we'd be open to. We, as you know, we have two electric vehicles currently, but we would need something larger for the survey equipment and the field gear that we have to, to carry around town.
Yeah, that's for the larger. I think there are some vehicles there. It would be interesting to see if there's something that would be available that would suit the need that you have.
We can definitely explore that. We're actually meeting with National Grid, Steve Sadwick and Department heads will be meeting with National Grid about electric vehicles and do what they did in inventory for us, and we're going to stop planning out over the next few years, investing in some areas of electric vehicles where we can.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't do it for like police cruisers, because they're going all day long.
No, we're going to get more fuel-efficient with our police cruisers.
Yeah, but for, for engineering, that, that makes some sense if you can find the vehicles that are applicable, so.
Sure.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Projects that will be seeking approval for underwater enterprise fund retained earnings. We're looking to, again, fund $125,000 for their share of the rubber-wheeled excavator with brush cutter. As I mentioned, Highway will fund $180,000 of that. They'll fund $11,000 for the two-variable message boards and $4,000 for the asphalt curb maintenance machine. They're also looking to split with the sewer department 50% cost for a F-50 flatbed patch truck. They're also, as I mentioned in the previous slides, looking for funds for hydrant replacement, water treatment plant upgrades, which is the repair of filter beds three and four. Four are cut off. And we're going to be seeking to use retained earnings for upgrades to the Astel Street tank. We are undergoing repairs and maintenance to the Astel Street tank. We authorized $1.8 million to be borrowed to fund that project, as well as $1.8 million from retained earnings at a previous town meeting. Instead of borrowing the money, we only need $625,000 of the 1.8 million. We're going to save on the borrowing costs and use retained earnings to pay for the remaining amount that we need. So that lessened the impact that we would have on our borrowing. On the sewer, we're looking to use retained earnings, similar to what I just mentioned, the rubber-wheeled tied excavator. The two-variable message boards, their cost share, the asphalt curb maintenance, their share, as well as the patch truck, 50% share with the water department. And then in addition, $50,000 for inflow and infiltration controls and pump station repairs. And it gives you the balance of the retained earnings. We're going to seek to raise an appropriate for the, from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, $450,000 for drains and project development. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking to use retained earnings from cable, $200,000 for, to Xavier Memorial High School studio upgrades for programming. Now, the next slides go into more detail of the projects we're planning to do in the, in next year. This slide gives you an idea of what roadways we plan to undertake under the roadway projects using Chapter 90 and the town budget appropriation. It's important to note that this is a list that we've put together at the moment, but this could change in a positive or negative way based on the pricing that we receive when we go out to bid. But this is a list in detail of what we're planning to do in the spring of '23 and in the, through the fall of '23. This next list is, gives you an idea of the water work that we're going to be doing between the spring of '23 and the spring of '24, outlines the water replacement projects we plan to do. As you can see, some of them align with other projects we're doing, but this gives you a list of the water projects we plan to do, the water treatment plant projects we plan to do, and the upgrades to the storage tanks. So this gives you that, that breakdown. And again, this will all be online and within the five-year plan. This next slide gives you an idea of what we're doing for drainage projects in the spring of '23 through the spring of '24. Sewer projects that we plan to do in the spring of '23 and the fall, through the fall of '23, and then the sidewalk and transportation projects, spring of '23 and the spring of '24. We will not be seeking funding for sidewalks at the fall, at the May town meeting. We will definitely be seeking funds at the fall town meeting. Almost done. Last couple of comments on the capital improvement plan. DPW equipment continues to, you know, be an area that we're going to focus on and upgrade in the future. Pavement management, any additional funds that we can throw towards, push towards pavement management will be helpful. We need to ensure that we're staying within the compliance of our stormwater permit, and that means utilizing the Stormwater Enterprise funds. And as we had in the past, we've used general fund money to help do that. We want to continue to be aggressive in our sidewalk projects. We'll seek $250,000 in the fall for sidewalk projects. We're aggressive in seeking out grants. Kevin's been very successful in getting grant funding. We've received funding within the state budget for sidewalks, which has been a big asset to us. And then we just need to keep an eye on our town and school facilities. We don't want them to fall behind in their maintenance and upgrades where they're going to cost us later in the fu, more money in the future. Then the final slide just gives you an indication of what we're going to be looking at in October. Obviously, from a, from just for an operating budget, we're going to fund any unfunded priorities that were presented by the departments when they presented their budgets, and anything that comes up after May town meeting. Historically, something always comes up between May and August and September that we need to address in the FY '24 budgets. Capital that I, we've moved off to the fall, $250,000 for sidewalks, we'll be looking for at a minimum. Water treatment plant upgrades, as I mentioned, residuals handling, that's about, we're projecting $1.5 million, but we have not seen the results of an engineering study that we're going to be doing. We'll be setting aside $600,000 in free cash for any fiscal '24 snow and ice deficits, and we'd like to replenish the stabilization fund with any free, any, with free cash with. with any funds we transfer out this year. And then again, just to reiterate, in the fall, we'll look at, we'll review our town's school facilities and our equipment and our infrastructure and determine, if anything, that came up after Maytown meeting that we want to address in October. That's it. Thank you.
All right, any last questions from my colleagues? Mr. Hardeman, any comments you want to offer?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for being here and answering those questions that were posed to you. Appreciate that. Mr. Montori, thank you again for a thorough preparation and detailed explanation of where you see us heading. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to move to item three on our new business, and that is, we have a series of municipal employee disclosures that need to be made. I'll read the names here. They're all the same situation where we have members of our Fire Department who are seeking the opportunity to serve as part-time traffic control officers. And under the state statutes, they're required to have that certified by the Chief of Police, that there is a need, and approved, the disclosure approved by this board. So just in the interest of full transparency and disclosure to the public, I will just read the names of these firefighters. Scott Austin, Sean Bradley, Jay Fagon, John Fowler, David Giassulo, Blake Herry, Justin Hubbard, Robert Keddie, Peter Smith, Jonathan Tomaro, Christopher Texera, Michael Willey, and Dan Casperzak. All are, as I stated, current members of our Fire Department, and they're seeking to disclose the potential for part-time work as traffic control officers. I would just ask if there's a motion to accept those disclosures?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Okay, so for our recording secretary's benefit, that motion was offered by Ms. Wellman and seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well. So again, for our recording secretary, that's five in favor, none opposed. Next item we have pertains to a discussion around the marijuana, retail marijuana regulations. And I guess I'll try to approach this as a recap, and I'm going to rely a little bit on some, I guess, phone-a-friend help from my colleagues. We met a week or so ago in executive session. We had a discussion around the process. The regulations have been adopted previously. I'm not sure that there's a need to change the regs themselves, but I do believe it's important for interested parties to understand that this board is going to try to pursue a process that we believe will be beneficial to the board in determining the three or up to the three potential retail marijuana license approvals. Effectively, we're going to ask the town manager and his staff to send correspondence to any known retail marijuana interested party who has held a community meeting or has otherwise reached out to town officials to make us aware that they are contemplating or interested in pursuing a license. The intention of that letter is to advise them that they should make every effort to file for their site plan review before the planning board as soon as possible. And this board is going to take the position from a policy perspective that we will not begin a hearing at the board, select board level, on the suitability of a license until there's been some activity on the part of the planning board relative to that site plan review. Assuming the known entities execute and follow up on what I just described, this board will, in the near term, consider the first round of applications to be paused or closed. And then we will, after those site plan review hearings are held by the planning board, we will entertain those license applications at this board. And ultimately, we'll either make a decision on one, two, three, I guess, or none. And if there are licenses available after that first round, the board will consider reopening that to other interested parties. So I guess the message, unless anyone has any corrections to what I just said, is that if you are an interested party, if you've held a community information session, the time is coming to get in front of the planning board. And this board is going to kind of sit back a little bit and wait for the planning board to make some, have some communication and evaluation on the site plan review process. So let me pause there and make sure that I stated that all correctly. If any of my colleagues disagree with what I said or have clarification, please speak up. Mr. Montori, I think the only ask we have of you is that that first correspondence go out. I don't think, from our discussions, we feel that we have to amend these regulations in any way. Is that...
No, I think it can be driven by policy.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't know that there's necessarily a requirement for a vote on that action plan, but, and I will ask that, obviously, it be recorded in the minutes. If anyone feels differently and prefers to have that approved or voted by the board, I certainly would accept a motion. I don't think it's necessary, but some of you may feel differently. Is everybody okay with that?
You summarized it very nicely. I'm good.
Okay. All right. So we'll park that issue, and we hope to see that letter go out, and then we'll follow the planning board's process. Mr. Montori, do you have anything else tonight?
Just on my report, I have just town council invoice for January 1 through January 15th in the amount of $3,145, and I would ask the board approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for making that motion, and Ms. Wellman for seconding it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there anyone, is there anyone opposed? The chair votes aye as well. That would be five to zero. And then I'm going to turn to Mr. Kratman. We have one set of minutes here.
Yes, we have a set of minutes from October 3, 2022, submitted to the board. I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Kratman to approve these minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That would be unanimous, five to zero vote. That brings us to board member reports. Mr. Kratman, you want to lead us off tonight?
Yeah, my boards are meeting later on in the month, so I really have nothing to add until the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
I'm good on my side. Thank you.
Okay. How about you, Mr. Mackey?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman?
I have a couple of quick things. For the board's information, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Advisory Committee showed our first movie in the Black History Month film series. That was Harriet. It was well attended at the library and we're appreciative to Robert Hayes and his colleagues at the library for helping host it there. Our next one is Black Panther, Wakanda Forever, and that will be on Thursday, February 23, at the high school auditorium. And that's at 6:00 PM, and it's free, and we hope to see lots of, lots of the residents come out and enjoy that movie in a very comfortable space because it's about three hours. So, and then the Frontline Initiative, Matthew Page Shelton had applied to Winchester Hospital for a grant, which was to be done in partnership with Frontline and the DEI Group. And the first part of that grant is LGBTQ listening sessions in the community. There'll be a remote option and an in-person option in March. And they're just listening sessions, and that will help us develop SMART goals for the grant. So we hope that folks will come out, and there'll be a guided kind of charrette program there. And some of that information was put today up on the town website and on social media. And there's a link for the remote session so people can join. And then finally, the elementary school building committee had our meeting last week, and I know that it was mentioned at the planning board meeting the other night, vis-à-vis the gymnasium floor, which has become a bit problematic because it is drying out at a greater rate than it was anticipated due potentially to humidity levels in the building or other causes. So there's work being done to determine what's caused the floor to have separations and the proper way to remediate it. And it's not clear at this time how that's, what's caused it. So if we were to take it out and put it back in, if it wouldn't happen again. So they're doing a bit of investigation. Mr. Montori can amend my comments if, I think I got them pretty good. Mr. Montori has been excellent at representing the town's interest in these meetings. And I think that the group, the designer and the OPM and the construction firm are well aware of, we're not going to pay for those changes to repair that floor. So it's been made very clear by lots of folks, and the committee's taking it very seriously. And I would say that there is a desire for everybody to figure out what's going on here. So it was not planned, and it's an unusual, but does happen sometimes, so they're investigating. We'll figure it out. But I wanted to bring that back to the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have no report, or no items to report this evening, so I think that concludes our business. Everybody is comfortable? All right, so we will next meet on March 7 at 7:00 PM, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn at 8:42 PM?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.